Okay, welcome, Lonnie Lee.
Thank you.
Glad to have you here. I think the best place to start is to ask you what inspired your candidacy. You are someone that has been involved in the nonprofit world, but not so much in city politics. So maybe you could give us what caused you to run this year?
Well, really what it was, was that I looked at the political situation in the country, and the choices that we're getting are not good. And I look, I firmly believe in the, my late 60s, early 70s, that you think locally or act locally and think globally. And that brought me to the situation where every one of my opponents basically is or has been somewhere in the political spectrum of Palo Alto. And so I read a quote and it said, "You will get what you tolerate," the other day. And I think we've been tolerating stagnation, and that's what we've got.
Are there some specific actions that the city council has taken or that the city has taken that sort of triggered your interest in this election?
No, it was just, I have the time. I, you know, everybody that I've talked to has told me I'm crazy to do this. It's heavily time-consuming. I have a 14-year-old son. But I will do the best I can if I'm elected, and that's my, that's kind of my deal. So it's not really things that they haven't done, it's inactions that they have done. They don't, they haven't done things. We talk a lot about things, but we don't do things about them. You know, they talk about having new parks. Well, I don't know if you've been over here to Pierce Park recently, but we're not taking care of the parks we have properly, you know, and that sort of thing. So I would like to, I believe that instead of thinking about things for six or seven years, that we get a vision of where we want to go and pass ordinances and laws that will take us there and adjust our course as we go. But I was listening the other day, and one of the council people were saying that, you know, they had studied SOFA II for six years. And I wanted, unfortunately you can't raise your hand at a city council meeting, but I wanted to raise my hand and say, "Well, could you please tell me what was the same in Palo Alto when you started studying it as when you passed the ordinance?" And this is where we're in a lot of trouble. We're using old data and not moving forward. We're going backwards and basing our decisions on old information, I think.
So let's, um, let's get to the question of development, which is certainly dominating this campaign as it has in prior years. You are, I believe, the one candidate who has not affirmatively endorsed the concept of the current development cap. And I wanted to give you an opportunity to explain your views on that and whether your objection to it is to the interim period that we're in right now or the whole concept of having some sort of a metered development cap.
Well, I believe that, again, we need to look forward and see where we want to be, and then make decisions based on that, not on where we've been and the mistakes that we've made. I was speaking to one of your reporters, old-time reporters, and he wrote an article in the Palo Alto Weekly in 1973 that basically stated that the cities was worrying about the jobs imbalance because at that time it was 2.5 to 1. Here we are 43 years later, and now it's 3.5 to 1. So in the 43 years, we haven't, we've identified the problem. A lot of people have talked about it. We've spent endless amounts of money and staff time studying it, but we haven't fixed it. My thing is that we need to find, to identify the problem, which is housing. And then the other thing that is thrown around in this is whether it's housing for teachers or first responders, as they call them, city fire and policemen. And that opens up a whole different thing. I talked to a couple of firemen the other day at the wine and art festival, and I asked them, I said, "You know, how many kids do you have?" And the guy said, "Well, I have three kids." And by looking at him, they're probably teenagers-aged kids. And so, and the other one had two kids, I would imagine, a little younger. And I said, "Would you consider living in an apartment?" And it was flat-out no. So I think most of the firemen and a lot of the policemen probably have kids. So you're not looking for apartments, you're looking for housing. So I believe that there's solutions to that that can be had because, again, the biggest problem with the housing situation in Palo Alto is the land cost. It's not the construction cost. And so what we have to do is we have to say to ourselves, "Okay, where can we provide land at a zero cost and allow people to build houses on it that would be used for future first responders and teachers?" And so that would be my first thing, would be identify those places. If they're on park lands, then we would have to go to the voters. And if we went to the voters and they turned it down, then they obviously don't want to have affordable housing in Palo Alto. If it's on the Coverly site, you know, if Coverly ever opened again, they could always use either Gunn or Palley's football fields and things like that. And there would still be more than enough room for practice fields and things like that. So I think there's solutions, I believe there are, and that's what I want to look for. I'm a project manager, and from, you know, it's what I like to do. And I like to take people and get them together and get them happily walking down the same street. And so that's kind of my stance on that. I'm, I believe that every city I've ever gone to in the world, the downtown is dense. It's high and it's dense. And so I believe that because of the situation in downtown Palo Alto, not necessarily here, but downtown Palo Alto would be a good place to have some extra housing. And I believe that there's some solutions on how to solve that too and make that affordable.
So you identified the housing jobs imbalance, and it's worsening condition over this period of
Yes.
three decades. But you immediately leapt to housing as the problem. I think there are a lot of people in this community that acknowledge that we need to be concerned with the housing situation, but they look to the development that's been approved over the last several years as being a big part of the problem.
Well, I firmly believe that our zoning policy is broken and needs to be re-looked at. Anytime that you can have a basement that's bigger in square footage than your house, that's not right. I firmly believe that.
Okay, but my question is about commercial development? And what constraints, if any, you would support if you were on the council?
It depends on the, on the project, where it is, how it's built, the number of people that are there, the number of parking spaces that are being provided by the developer, and that sort of thing. I, I don't think you can take an overall, I think that that's one of our problems, is that we have a cookie cutter policy. And so if you're building a little building over here, you are under the same restrictions as if you're building a multi-story, multi-tenant building in Stanford Research Park or out in the Baylands or something like that. So I really believe that it depends. I think you have to look at these projects on their merits and not on just saying, "Well, if you don't do this, then you can't build that. And if you can't build this, then you have to do that." And I think that there, as I say, I believe there's solutions to those problems. Again, the other side of the flip coin of the development issue is traffic. Well, if you go over here on Sherman at 11:30, there's parking everywhere. 11:35, you can barely park. And so I think as one of my, the incumbent in this race said, "A lot of our traffic and parking issues are transient." So the other thing that I would look at for downtown as well as parking is that after 10 o'clock, permit parking is open for anybody. You know, if the person isn't there, then that may be a solution to our problems. One of the other candidates is talking about using unused parking in people's buildings. I don't think that's practical for a security standpoint, especially since what he's talking about is a security company. So as I say, I think we have to look at all the, again, we have to look at the problems, find the solutions, and try something. And then if that's not working, immediately admit it and try something else. And, you know, that's, instead of just not doing anything, and that's obviously what we have done. We went for years with no parking in downtown. You know, if you built a building in downtown Palo Alto, you didn't have to park it. Well, they finally woke up after, I think it was 20 years, and said, "Well, you know, wow, that wall wasn't very good." And I think that that's what you have to do, is you have to revisit those things and just not let them ride.
So I just want to clarify with a follow-up on this question of commercial development. Are you saying that every proposal for a commercial building should be evaluated on the merits of its, of just that proposal without regard to the zoning? How does zoning fit into this? Because that's what creates the parameters through which a developer knows they're working with.
Well, I think that that's one of the problems, is that they aren't, that's not working, okay? Mrs. Wong is a good example. Here you have perfect zoning. I think the problem was that Mrs. Wong wasn't told what to expect. I think there's, there's other things that we could have done with Mrs. Wong to make that a better building. And so her building fits the zoning, but there's somebody that's upset about the size of it. Well, you know, my problem with Mrs. Wong's building is the design on University Avenue. I just don't believe that that's the proper place for that kind of looking building. But that's me. And I'm, but I believe that when you have the zoning, if it's parked properly and it's, and it fits the parameters that the city hall or the council has decided on, then I think that it should go forward. I think a good example is that, you know, we have a, where you have to have, you have to have first-floor retail in a certain zone. And I went to the meeting the other day, and they were talking about vibrance and how people get together and all this stuff. And that's what brings people together, is the retail and that sort of thing. And I asked, I've asked a lot of people. I said, "Have you ever asked anybody to go to have coffee at Anthropologie or at 100 Addison? And go, let's have a talk and we can sit down?" And the answer is no. I go to Ace Hardware. One of the gentlemen that stood up and spoke against the zoning or the waiver said, "Well, look at Ace Hardware." Well, again, I don't think I've ever asked. Now, I have had people where I've gone and gotten an ice cream cone across the street, but I've never gone and gotten that. So the, this is what I'm talking about, is that we draw lines, we do these things, but we don't go back and look at them and say, "You know, that was applicable when these were retail stores. Is that still applicable? Is it adding to the vibrance of our city?" No. So we need to alter our course and make a change to the ordinance and make the waivers or change the ordinance so that you don't need a waiver. You know, again, a Quonset Hut on the street over here is, yeah, it's the, it's the Pet Food Depot. But the Pet Food Depot, if it moves out, that's on an, that's not a retail area. I'm sorry. It's not adding vibrance to our community. The only way that you would do that is have a clothing store for the gym across the street. You know, something like that.
I want to touch upon one topic that comes out of the jobs housing imbalance, which you've referenced already, which is traffic. There's a particular concept that's being tried right now, the transportation demand management idea, where companies will give, you know, Caltrain subsidies, encourage biking and whatnot. A lot seems to hinge upon whether or not that kind of approach might be successful and effective. Some people have high confidence that that's the wave of the future. We can get people out of their cars, we can get them on the bikes. And some people are much more skeptical and think that that's kind of betting too much of our quality of life on the concept that may or may not be effective. I want to know where you stand on that.
Well, I didn't know anything about it, and it was an acronym that people were throwing around at these. And I, my son and I went to the bike Palo Alto thing, and I was downtown, and I saw this thing that said TMA. So I went over and had a long conversation with the lady and said, "Could you please explain this to me? Because I don't, you know, I don't know anything about it." And I think one of my, again, this is, you know, you can go either way on this, but I think one of my, the benefits of my candidacy is that I don't know anything. So I'm coming in, and when we talk about something, I go and find out about it. And I learn about it from both sides, not from one side. So I had a very good conversation with her, and it sounds like something that we should try. I mean, I think it's better than the bicycle, spending a million dollars on bicycle kiosks around because that's already been shown to fail. And to try to keep it going in certain places, I agree, but to spend that kind of money to make it bigger, I'd much rather try this for, you know, maybe $100,000 or whatever. That hasn't been tried, it's been tried in other states or in other cities. I think my opponent, Mr. Fine, was involved in that in Berkeley or Oakland, I think, when he was working over there for the Transit Authority, or I think that's what he said. So I would be open to trying it, but at the same time, I've talked to some other people, and they have said that the problem with the idea is that the people that you're giving the cards to don't have one or two or three jobs. They have daycare situations and things like that, so they really can't use them. Now, I'm sure there's some people that can use them, and those are the people that we should try to target and do. I'm not sure what you do. I mean, it's kind of like I was going to be in the Bat Kid Dancing Group up in San Francisco. And so I went to park my car, couldn't find a parking place. Finally parked on this side and found a parking place way down at the end, and I was paying, about ready to pay for my thing as the train pulled out. Well, that next train doesn't come for another hour. So that's why I'm for, you know, somehow during the day getting Caltrain to run a little bit more often than, and I went to the city the other day. So I think it's, it's well worth trying and seeing, and but targeting the people that will use it. Maybe younger people that don't have kids or, you know, that are students or something like, you know, that sort of thing. So I don't know the exact answer, but it is, it's an intriguing idea. It does, it will get one or two people at least out of their cars. And that's, and that's, you know, what I look at is the cost per person out of the car. You know, if we're spending $50,000 to get one person out of their car, that may not be a good use of our funds. But it's worth trying, and then, and that ties right into my whole concept, is that you try it, and if it doesn't work, you either change it or find something else.
So does that philosophy with regards to housing development extend to underparking, intentionally underparking, high-density housing development on the assumption that there will be tenants there that don't have cars?
I think you can't make that assumption, and I have talked to, I've talked to Todd Speaker about that. And I've told him that I have support his thing. And I, I know about that corner because when I came into the commercial and industrial real estate business, that was one of the first things I ever worked on. And I went down to TVA and talked to them quite extensively. And we were going to put a car wash there. That was what I was working on. Obviously, it didn't happen. It's too bad, see, this is a good example of where the city may have worked, called the, you know, the TVA and said, "Hey, can we have that property? Or can, you know, can we do something with that property a long time ago?" When they built the Sunrise project. Because it's an oddball. I mean, it's impossible to get into. So I've told Todd, I said, "You know, I would support this as long as you park it such that, and your leases state that if you have a car, you can't be in one of the studios. And if you have, are found to have a car, you'd be evicted within 30 days. If you have a one-bedroom, you'd be able to have one car." Again, with the caveat that this is what you have. It's kind of, when I was on the CDVG Funding Committee, we built the SRO, or the Palo Alto Housing Corp. was building the SRO on Alma next to the Vida or the BMW's repair shop. And I said, "Why are we having all this parking? You got 750 square feet." The whole idea of this is to have people that are living, working in downtown Palo Alto and, you know, and buy transit and all this other stuff. Why, why are we putting in all these parking spots? Because it's very expensive. Well, we can't tell people not to have cars. Well, they can't because they're a public agency, I believe, and that's probably why they can't. But I, you know, where it's a private situation, that could be written into the lease, I guess. But I don't know. But that, that's a good example of where you take that on its face value. Now, does this do what you want it to do? Yes, it takes people out of cars. You have a transit hub here, you kind of have a grocery store down here. You know, and, and then you have enough parking for the people that are there. And they're actually going to put some more parking, you know, those, they're talking about doing more parking, you know, with those elevator things.
Lifts, yeah.
So, you know, does that answer your question?
Yeah. You've mentioned downtown parking problems. And in your, one of your survey responses, you expressed the view that the downtown residential parking program is not working and is an example of a flawed process, flawed implementation. Can you explain what's not working about it and what you changed?
Well, I think, I think the, well, it was, it's very clear. When they, when they implemented the first day, if you went one block to the next, across the street from where it was, that's where everybody parked. So I don't know what they, you know, whether they studied it, who studied it, whether we had consultants studying it, whatever. But to think that that wouldn't happen, to me, was absolutely not right-thinking. And it, you should, they should have known that. And so somebody should have said, "Well, how far will people actually walk?" Well, then maybe we should have put it all the way to Embarcadero, up in Embarcadero, you know, across Newell or something, and then down across Gwinda and, you know, wherever. But again, it, to think, it's kind of like trying to tell people to get on a bicycle. It's a great idea. I rode a bicycle here today. And it's a great idea, but you can't, you just, you can't legislate people's minds that way. So you have to figure out how far they're going, willing to walk to not bring their car.
Isn't this though an example of exactly what you began this interview describing as the way city, the city ought to approach things? They shouldn't take forever to try to get to the perfect solution. They ought to try something. If it doesn't work, they ought to change it, which is exactly what happened.
That's what they did, but they should have known. What I, my problem with it is that they should have known that it was going to happen. That was, if I had have been on the city council, I would have known that, that by, and I said, when they were talking about it, still talking about it, "Are we going to do it?" "No, we're not going to do it." "Yeah, we're going to do it." That went on for quite a while. I knew that what was going to happen is people were going to park. And when I drove down Waverly Street the first day, there they all were. So that's what I'm saying, Bill. It's not, it's not that you start off with something you know is going to fail, or if you should have known it's going to fail. And I agree, they, they made the course correction, and that's good. And they did it fairly quickly. They realized that what they did didn't work. But then they had to start all over again and get, do the whole process again instead of having it just done once. But this is the sort of thing where you just go, you know, "What are they thinking?" You know, "Why would you think somebody's not going to walk an extra two blocks to park their car?" I mean, it's just, I agree with you, and that is a place where it has worked well.
So you're happy with the current program?
I don't know enough about it. It seems that people, there are still some cars out there. And I think that the ticketing situation in Palo Alto and outsourcing it and things like that, you know, I'm not sure I understand all that. And so, you know, it's, 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 it seems to be working, and I'd have to, it's not something I've concentrated on recently, but I drive down Waverly quite often, and I see people walking down the street. And they're not people that live in Palo Alto, I don't think. And I see a few cars, but there's less. Now, when they moved it out two more blocks, now you find just a couple of cars out there that don't have stickers.
So as you know, the residents of Evergreen Park, the neighborhood adjacent to California Avenue are asking for protection from parkers that are employed here on California Avenue. Do you believe that a similar kind of program should be implemented there with the same type of shared use but between employees and residents? Or do you look towards the model in college terrorists where it's only residents that are permitted to park? Or nothing at all?
Well, again, I think it's a residential community, and I think that the way that we've been building houses these days, and you see it really a lot over here, where they're building bigger houses, they have more cars. When I was a kid and growing up in Palo Alto, you never saw a car on the street because nobody had extra cars. Kids didn't have cars. You drove your mother's car. My father was an automobile dealer. And I didn't have a car until I was a senior in high school. So I think, again, it's something that we would have to look at and see what the, you know, I'd have to go look and drive around in the evening and see what the parking situation is because there's a lot of apartments there. And so you have a lot of transient things, and how would you deal with that? That would be something I'd have, we'd have to, I'd have to ask the parking guys and that sort of thing. So again, I would go into it with not a preconceived notion. I wouldn't have the endorsement of the Evergreen group, you know, and I could make, I think I could make an informed decision by, by looking at it.
It seems like one of the gripes that people have is lack of follow-through on the city's part. Laws, ordinances are passed, and then nothing happens to really enforce it, whether that is construction permits that lapse or short-term rentals that are popping up in single-family neighborhoods or leaf blowers. And the city has only four code enforcement officers right now. What, what do you think is, you know, doable about this issue?
Okay, I'll give you a good example. My wife, it drives my wife nuts, the leaf blowers. Okay, the other day, there was a guy across the street from us with his leaf blower blowing away, and a policeman drove by. Okay, no lights on, just kind of driving on by. And he's not a code enforcement person, but he is a policeman. And I can guarantee you that if they drove by and he stopped and said, "Senor" or "Sir" or whatever, "You know that's illegal", that guy would give it a second thought. The current thing is, is that I believe, and now I haven't done it in a while, but my wife has done it. You get the license plate number of the truck. You send that, go online, put that in, and then they get a letter. Okay, now to get the second letter, my wife's got to go back in and do this sort of stuff. So, you know, if you put it, if, if you have police, police have got to start being policemen, you know, and, you know, sitting on the And, you know, sitting on the corner of Waverly and Embarcadero in your car, waiting for somebody to run the light or to go, be a little late in running the light, I agree, it may be a good idea. But when they're driving by people breaking up ordinance or a law or anything, I mean, I can guarantee you that if I was smoking a joint and that guy walking down the street and that guy saw me, he would stop and talk to me, okay? If you look at the police blotter in your, in the post, what is the most common thing you see in there? Drinking in public and drunk in public. What's the difference between drinking in public and, and running a leaf blower in public? They're both city ordinances that are illegal. So I would just like to see when the, you know, I mean, because there's nobody using non-gasped leaf blowers in Palo Alto that I know of, you know? So I, I mean, that's my thing is that the police need to stop and say something to them just so they know, you know? And then they, you know, if they're out driving a neighborhood, you know, the next week and they see the guy, he say, hey, you know, I told you last week, you can't do that. You know, now I'm gonna have to, you know, give you a citation or something. But the police officers, they, I understand they're busy and they've got things to do. And I'm not, you know, disparaging any police officers here. But I am saying that they, they could help the situation. And I think that's true on all the things that you're talking about.
A direction from the top that just needs to be given.
Well, I don't know how that comes down, but yeah, I would imagine that they are told in the morning that they're gathering that, you know, if you see somebody out there, you know, if you're driving around on Sunday and you see somebody working at a construction site, you know, just stop and say hello, you know? I mean, that's kind of what community policing is supposed to be about and that's what we're supposed to have, so.
A similar area where some think that the city does not adequately enforce its terms and conditions have to do with PC projects. And certainly the one in front of us right now that's controversial is the Edgewood Plaza Grocery Store Project. Are you in favor of increasing the fines against the developer there until there is in fact a grocery store provided? Or what would you do in that, in that situation?
Well, I went to the Edgewood picnic and I watched a couple of my fellow candidates rev up the group. They revved them all up. I happen to be in commercial and industrial real estate. I don't understand, I haven't read the agreement, the PC agreement exactly. And I haven't read the lease with Fresh. Now, the problem, as I said at that gathering, was I think we're talking to the wrong person. Okay? Because, now again, I have, I don't, I'm not privileged and I'm going to a city manager information thing this, later this week and hopefully that's one of my questions. The PC probably says, and I'm guessing, that Sand Hill Properties will lease the space to a grocery store, period, okay? They have done that. They have no control over the grocery store that currently holds the lease or control over the property because it's leased. And when you lease something, as I tell my clients, when you have a triple net lease, which I'm sure it is, it's the same as owning the property except you don't have the pink slip or the title because you pay everything. So we need to see what the lease says between those two people, okay? Then the other thing that, where I think we've had problems in the city, again with zoning, is that we say, okay, that's going to be a twenty thousand square foot grocery store. Okay, well, no one asked the grocery stores how big a place they need to be profitable or how small a place they need. So what we need to do is go and talk to Andronicos, for instance. Because Andronicos had a deal, okay? We need to find out why that deal fell apart, okay? Was it that Fresh wanted too much money for the lease to sublease it? Because they're in control of that, has nothing to do with Sand Hill Properties. And then the other thing is, is maybe it's too small. Well, I've been in that building for years because I used to go to the circus before it was built on that property. And so I've been in there a lot and it's a very high ceiling. Well, what did, what did Drager's do to solve their space problem in Melo Park? They put a mezzanine in, okay? So we say, okay, Andronicos, you need twenty-five thousand square feet. You have a permit, either Fresh or Andronicos or Sand Hill Properties, to put a five thousand square foot mezzanine in there as long as you put it in a exit so that the fire codes are met and that sort of thing. Done. Okay, we go right down our business. This is where I'm talking about, that we have to look at the project. And what's the problem with this project? Why is there no grocery store there? Well, there's a reason and it's one of those reasons. And we have the ability to solve it. But nobody's at, talking, all they wanna do is find Sand Hill Properties. And I agree that probably, because what's going to happen is that Sand Hill Properties will say, well, you know, now this is starting to cost me some money. And so we're gonna countersue you, we're gonna sue you, the city, because we don't have control over this property. And that's what they keep telling the city, you gotta talk to Fresh.
Isn't that a risk that the developer takes when he gets benefits for developing their property in excess of what the zoning allows? That's a whole principle of the PC zone. I give, I give a public benefit and in exchange, you get to do something.
For leasing that space to a grocery store.
Well, but what you're focusing in on are the, is information you don't know and that is what specifically was the wording adequate to protect the city?
Right.
But let's assume that it was for a second.
Okay.
Then would you say that this is all on the developer?
Yeah, but I don't think, I think you're going to find that the developer does, is, has done what he, under the PC, has agreed to do. And that is to lease the space or to provide a grocery store. They did that, Bill. The problem is, is that Fresh decided to close all their California stores on the same day and leave.
So as a, as a-
And he has, and they have no control over it.
Right, but as a commercial real estate person yourself, that's a stupid lease to have entered into. The, the lease provision should have included, should you terminate your use of the building as a grocery store, the lease is automatically terminated.
Well, okay.
Right? You wouldn't have signed a lease like that.
Well, no, I don't think I would have signed a lease like that.
Right.
That's the thing, so Fresh wouldn't sign something like that maybe.
Then it's on the developer, why isn't that on the developer then?
Well, because that's not what the city asked them to do. I, I'm just saying, as I say, we can talk about hindsight, okay? We can go back and say, this is what should have happened. What we need to do is find out what happened, okay? And then deal with it on what, what the situation actually is, okay? Yes, you're absolutely right, the city probably should have said to the developer, should the, should the, the grocery store go out of business or terminate its business in the state of California or however you wanted to word it, then you, the lease would be void and you would be responsible to find a new grocery store and make any accommodation. But again, if you ask the city, if the city goes down to, if the, a grocery store like Andronicos goes down to the city planners and say, hey, we'd like to put a mezzanine in here. Are you crazy? Why would we let you do that? That's not the zoning, that's not this, that's not that, you know? I just built a house and I understand the city, how, you know, I'm sorry you can't do that. Okay, you know? So they walk away, you know? I, I just did this in, and I'm working on a deal in, in Mountain View there, I'm buying a piece of property. I went to the Mountain View, oh, you can't do that. Okay, you know? So we figure out some other way to do it. But that's exactly my point. What I think we should do, and if I was elected, I'd make myself a committee of one if, or whatever. And we would go, I would go down to this, you know, and I'd look, I'd talk to the city attorney. Okay, tell me what is in here, okay? Then I'd make them produce the lease and then I'd figure out what the problem is. Then I'd call Andronicos and I'd say, why did you walk away from this deal? There has to be a reason. They didn't just say, oh, well, we don't wanna make any more money because we're just flush with cash, especially in that, in that business. It's a tough business, you know? But they did the same thing here at J&amp;J. You know, they said, okay, this is gonna be this big a grocery store, you know? And so, I mean, I understand. But there should may have been some discussions about, with the grocery store people, how big that grocery store has happened? How many times have we had, how many grocery stores have we had on Alma Street? This is kind of an ongoing problem. And this is where I think you need to take each situation on its, on its merits and work with the developer or the grocery store or whatever to make it work for them. You know, not having any windows on a grocery store is, you know, I'm sorry, doesn't make any sense to me and I'm just a guy.
We're out of time, but I wanna end with one, one question. If you're elected, you will serve on a city council that will hire the next city managers? Jim Keane is gonna be retiring. How will that city manager, if you were making that decision, how would that new city manager look different than Jim Keane?
Well, I think I would listen to the city manager a lot more. I firmly believe that whether it's the city manager or the planning people, we pay them a lot of money for their expertise. And to always be second guessing them or not, you know, going, following their lead, it, it's almost like you shouldn't have one. If you're not gonna listen to them, you might as well, they might as well not be there. Because the people underneath him are the ones that are giving him the data and he's making decisions. If you're getting the data, he doesn't need to be there if we have to deal with that. So I think-
Then the council doesn't really need to be there.
Well, the council has to give him direction, you know? Again, I think they need to give vision, you know, of what we want.
So you think the council is, is meddling too much in the management of the city?
Yes, oh, sure.
And so in replacing-
Because that's why we have grocery stores that don't survive.
So in replacing Keane, would you be looking for then a more assertive, stronger city manager? Or, I mean, how, how would that impact your, your decision about a city manager?
Well, I guess that would be in the interview process. And again, I would talk to people that have done that. I mean, I would call Steve Emfley and say, Steve, you know, what do you think? I would call you, you know, what do you think? And what, what should I be looking for? And I think that that's one of my strengths is that I can take people, I, I will call people and say, and ask them a question. They can say, no, I won't talk to you or I, you know, never mind or whatever. But a lot of times, people say yes, you know? My son has type one diabetes and when he was diagnosed, he was living in Italy. And I looked on the, on the Medtronics webpage under the directors and one of the directors was on the, on the Stanford Hospital Board. So I called somebody I knew, said, can you introduce me to this person? That's how I work. I don't know a lot of things and I don't wanna know a lot of things. But I'm good at learning, kind of like this TMA thing. I went and I talked to this lady because she is the one, she's the lady that's actually doing it. So I talked to her. So I don't think I can really answer your question directly because I've never hired a city manager. And I don't pretend that I know how to hire a city manager. But I think I can, I, I know the people who I can ask, who can help me make those decisions. And that's kind of how I look at myself is, and I tell a lot of people in this, that talk to me. I say, you know, one day I'm gonna make you really mad at me and you're not gonna like me. And the next day, I'm gonna be your hero. Because people come up and they say, well, Leonard, are you a residentialist? And I say, no, I'm a Palo Altoanist and that's really what I am. I, I wanna do the best that I can for the city that I've lived in for sixty-six years. My father would never have done this job because he's not politically correct. My biggest worry is that someone is going to arrest me for doing something wrong, you know, because I don't know that I'm doing something wrong. You know, like the Brown, Breaking the Brown Act or something.
It won't be for running a gas-powered leaf blower, though.
No, I have, I have my own, and they're just as noisy.
Leonard, thank you very much for coming.
You're very welcome, thanks for your time.